All right. Good morning, everybody. We are live now. Welcome to our November 25th regular meeting. Call this meeting to order and I've asked Dan Cameron to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. All right, let's move on to roll call.
Roll call Commissioner District One Randy Netherlands.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three Sharon Trask.
I am here.
All present.
Moving on to item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
Yes, we do. We have a Board of Health application from Dean Jewitt. We have a letter from the Squawson Tribe requesting delay of hearing for the withdrawal of Squawson Island properties from South Mason Fire and Rescue Territory. We have a levy certification from Herb Gerhardt for Mason County Public Hospital District Number Two Travis Morrell for Port of Allen Public Hospital District One Karen Thomas for Fire District Eighteen Kathleen Wyatt for Port of Hootsport, Port of DeWatto Sharon Hankinson for Mason County Cemetery District One and Troy Woodward for Mason County Fire District Number Six. We also received letters from Federal Energy Regulation Commission regarding the analysis and approach package of the Cushman Number One Development Cushman Project DPP Cushman Number One Development Cushman Project and DPP Field Guidance Document Cushman Number One Development Cushman Project. We also received Lodging Attacks Advisory Committee Application from Kerry Myers and following that, we received the Mason County Transit Authority Board Application from Michaela Porter. We also received renewal notice from the Liquor and Cannabis Board as well as Historic Preservation Commission Application from a Virginia Feldman. And we received notice from Comcast regarding removal of channels owned by Versant from Digital Economy Tier and changes to Xfinity. And we received notice of liquor and license application for the Posh Pescatarian LLC and Nimrat Jasleen INC. And the, that would be complete our correspondence.
Are you sure?
Man, I hope so.
All right, let's move on to item 4.2. This is our annual Mason County Heritage Grant Cycle News Release.
Morning Commissioners, Luke Vescy on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission to read your news release. The Mason County Commissioners and the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission are pleased to announce the opening of the 2026 Heritage Grant Cycle. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission administers the annual Mason County Heritage Grant Program to assist projects that promote the public's access to county history. The program is funded with a portion of document recording fees collected by the Mason County Auditor. The allocation of these fees for projects that promote historical preservation or historical programs, which may include preservation of historic documents, is authorized under RCW 36.22.170. The revenues accrue to a dedicated fund and may not be used for any other purpose other than those stipulated in the statute. For the 2026 grant cycle, a total of $16,000 is available. Granted amounts up to $4,000 may be awarded to qualified organizations for professional development, public education, small capital projects, collections management, heritage investigations, and historic preservation. This is a reimbursement grant with a six-month project period. Both the grant guidelines and the application can be found on the Mason County website, which is masoncountywa.gov backslash government backslash advisory underscore boards backslash historic underscore preservation backslash heritage grant. Proposals can be mailed or hand-delivered to the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission at 615 West Alder Street in Shelton, Washington, 98584. Applications must be received by 12:00 PM on January 16th, 2026. For questions, please contact Luke Vescy at 360-427-9670, extension 282, or by email at hpc@masoncountywa.gov. Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to item, sorry, 4.3 Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board openings news release. Who's going to read that one for us?
If I knew I was doing it, I would have found it quicker, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's page 61.
Page 61, I'll see. Parks and Trails Advisory?
Yes, please.
You got it. The Board of Mason County Commissioners is seeking applications from community members who are interested in serving on the Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board. The Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board provides recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding the planning, acquisition, and development of parks, trails, and related programs in Mason County. The Parks and Trails Advisory Board is a seven-member board appointed by the Mason County Commissioners. Ideally, there would be two positions from each Commissioner District and one at-large position. If the vacancies cannot be filled with members from the respective districts as desired, at-large members residing anywhere in Mason County can be substituted. The intent is to provide equal geographic representation from throughout Mason County if possible. Currently, we have three second district representatives and two third district representatives. We are in need of two members. If you have an interest in parks, trails, or other outdoor recreational opportunities that would like to make a difference in your community, you are encouraged to apply. The Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board meets the fourth Thursday of each month at 4:00 PM. Interested citizens may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioner's Office, 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton, or by calling Shelton 360-427-9670, extension 419, or visit the Mason County website. Applications will be accepted until positions are filled.
All right, great, thank you. Moving on to item 4.4 Mason County Solid Waste Offering Free Christmas Tree Recycling.
I'm feeling better.
I know, it's good to see your face.
Morning.
Morning.
Kevin Gehosse, Solid Waste Manager, and I'm here to lead the Christmas tree recycling that we have going on. Mason County residents can recycle their Christmas trees for free from December 26th through January 10th at the following locations. Shelton Transfer Station, 501 West Els Hill Road, it's open daily from 8:00 to 4:45 PM. The Belfer Solid Waste Drop-Off Facility at 1611 Northeast Sand Hill Road, Belfer, that is open Tuesday through Saturday, 9:00 to 3:15. Curbside customers with Mason County garbs can cut up their trees and put them in their carts. All trees must be free of decorations, tinsel, and blocking. Reeds and garland are not accepted as they contain wire and cannot be recycled.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you. You going to read the next one too?
Is it mine?
Yeah.
Okay. Early closure for Els Hill Transfer Station and the Belfer Dropbox, December 18th. Mason County Public Works, excuse me, announces the early closure for the Els Hill Transfer and the Dropbox, Belfer Dropbox Solid Waste Stations on Thursday, December 18th. The last customer will be accepted at 12:30 PM at the Els Hill Transfer Station and 11:30 AM at the Belfer Dropbox Station. These closures are to allow for public work staff Christmas luncheon and all hands-on staff meeting. We kindly ask the public plan ahead. We appreciate your understanding and cooperation.
Perfect. You get an A for the day.
All right, thank you guys.
Do you know that she threatened to have Orenna come up and put a hat on? If you couldn't come in today?
Don't forget the beard.
And the beard.
Well, she can borrow my hat. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, let's move on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for citizen input. We have 15-minute time limit, ask for three minutes per person, and I know we have one right away.
It must be me.
Yeah, it is. I like just looking at people making the.
Good morning, Kelly Fraser, Mason County Spirits Manager. I'm here and excited to announce that Mason County is joining our colleagues across the nation launching Operation Green Light for Veterans. Now more than ever, our veterans need support in time when our country is divided on so many issues. We can all agree that those individuals who has risked everything to protect our county in our way, life deserves support and gratitude. As part of Operation Green Light, Mason County has eliminated some of our county buildings green for the month of November, and we are encouraging individuals and business to join us. Roughly 250,000 members transition in and out of the armed service each year. Join us to help shine a light and support and welcome our veterans home. By shining a green light, we aim to let veterans know that they seem appreciated and supported. Join us in Operation Green Light for Veterans by changing one light bulb in your house or in your inchway of your business. Let's turn Mason County green. I'd like to thank my staff for going out there, going above to make this happen. If you drove by at night, we got four or five of our buildings lit. We got the Memorial Hall lit in green, so we definitely could have done with that. I want to recognize all veterans in the room and on Zoom, so if you would, all veterans, please stand. On Zoom, you could raise your hand. Only you two. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our veteran, head of our local DAV, Dan Cameron, to read the proclamation.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Mason County. Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025 Proclamation. Whereas the residents of Mason County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who serve in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Mason County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedoms by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, VFW, DAV, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian lives, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. True statement. And whereas the active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after the military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourage all counties, parishes, boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans, and whereas Mason County appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans of Mason County hereby declares November 2025 as a time to salute and honor the service sacrifices of those transitioning from active service, and be it further resolved that Mason County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the windows of their place of business or residence for the month of November. So, that being said, I would like to just thank Mason County up in Belfer and here in Shelton. We just did a veteran stand-down Friday. It was a great success. Also, thanks to the county, they supported us a lot, and we helped 26 veterans this Friday. Hopefully, next year, we can help more. We only had seven homeless veterans, but we opened it this year to veterans' families, and next year, it'll be the same thing. They can come in for information or anything they need, so thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Anyone else, please come up, state your name.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. I'm Paul Wannakee, Superintendent, Southside School District, representing the parents and students and staff and school board at Southside School District. Southside School District was established in 1903. In 1903, we had a little stagecoach path that led to the school. Fast forward 120 years later and post-COVID, our little narrow access lane has a hard time accommodating at that time during COVID when our students and parents didn't want to ride our buses. We had over 75 parents at one time at our drop-off area, so we had an issue and a problem in staging all the cars that were coming into our school, so I reached out to the county. I appreciate our problem-solving efforts with the county and specifically the Red Swanson. All the other schools in the year 2025 in the county and in the city have curbs and gutters and access walkways. We still have a small country road accessing our school. We worked with the county to try to widen that road area, worked with our neighbors. Our neighbors and parents are pro widening the road, but that hasn't been accomplished yet, although we've worked really closely, including visits with our school board, to try to accomplish that. I want to thank the county for this year coming in and painting the lines and creating a crosswalk area across from the school that has a new gravel pathway area that allows students to walk along that pathway area. Unfortunately, we still have the issue of staging our cars coming into the school and cars in the neighborhood trying to pass that area and get into our parking area. But we have been reduced post-COVID down to about 30 parents that are coming in, so it's a matter of seven to 11 minutes every day in which we have a dangerous area where cars are passing at the same place. This gravel area is only about 500 square feet that the county has provided for us. We're asking the county that they eventually pave that area. So, at the current time, we are staging our cars with two wheels into that gravel area so cars can pass and get into our parking lots. And then we're holding our students behind until those cars leave, so then they can walk that path home. That's the safest way we can accomplish dismissal at school. As an administrator, our most important mission is to make sure we have zero abductions of students at our school. We can't, we can't live with that. So, our procedure is that we see the eyeballs of every person that we release students to every day after school. That is critical, that that integrity needs to continue. I look, I look forward to our continuing conversations with the county over this issue.
Thank you, Paul.
No questions?
All right, next.
Good morning Commissioners, Bill Hyatt. I come before you today a little bit frustrated with our homeless situation that we still have in Mason County. There was a large group of individuals that did Herculean efforts to clean up the area above the coming into Shelton. Now that the foliage is back off the trees again, we're seeing the same thing over and over and over again. Despite being 13th in the nation in population, Washington State has the third highest population of homeless. That's fact. We do the same thing over and over and over again and expect different results, and it's not working. I ask that the Commissioners, I know that they are looking at a five-year plan that they've hired outside consultants to advise them on. I seriously expect them to go ahead and study that a little bit harder. We also want to go ahead and take a serious look at whether we're giving a hand up or a hand out. When you give a hand up, you get people lifted up from their situations. When you give them a hand out, all you're doing is you're expecting the same thing over and over and over again. I want to focus on our homeless veterans first. I also want to focus on the people of Mason County. There has been evidence of many people coming to Mason County that are not from this area. We have limited resources in Mason County, and when you continually go ahead and have people being dumped in our town, our homeless population has grown exponentially from what we were even at two years ago. Please review what we're doing and maybe take a look at something, doing something different. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good morning Commissioners and public. My name is Michael Subtroth. I'm from Belfer, Washington, and I am a member of several organizations trying to make Mason County better. One thing that I heard over and over when I attended the Planning Commission reviewing the comprehensive plan was the need for affordable housing. Mason County has very little. One of the reasons perhaps that we have so many homeless people not housed is we just don't have enough affordable housing. This should become a priority. I know this is, these are hard times financially, and yet, we know through studies that people who are housed are more likely to be able to do other things like finding jobs, seeking further education, and being contributors rather than a drain on the resources. So, we have to make affordable housing a priority. And in addition to that, I'd like to make sure that Mason County stays inviting to tourists who provide us a great revenue stream. We need to make sure that our parks and recreation facilities are vibrant, and I'm really glad that we're moving ahead in that direction. And as a former member of the Advisory Trails and Parks, we had good results when I was on that group. But keeping Mason County green, clean, waters flowing well is also vital. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Good morning Commissioners, Kevin Schutte, Mason County Economic Development Council. Happy to be with you this morning. Couple of updates from the organization that I wanted to share. As you know from our briefing a few weeks ago, we're conducting childcare work in the community to help expand access to childcare. Just want to encourage folks to go to our website, masonedc.org. We have a survey there to help better identify what parents and families need for their kids in the community. We have that survey available both in English and Spanish there, and it's also on our social media pages, so if you don't want to go to your web browser and put in masonedc.org, you can go check us out on Facebook and find the, find the survey there. I'm also really excited to announce that through partnership with North Mason Chamber, we're opening a office in Belfer for the DDC. So, we have a mandate to serve businesses countywide, and we have always done that. However, we think that through partnership with North Mason Chamber and being able to have a physical space in Belfer, that we'll be able to be a little bit more accessible to businesses up there. So, we're kicking that off in December, and so the plan so far is to be there on Tuesdays and of course, anytime by appointment if folks are interested in meeting with us to take advantage of the free business resources that we offer and learn a little bit more about our work, we'll be up there. And so I have to thank Kerry Myers, President and CEO of the North Mason Chamber, as well as Mendy Harlow, who's their Board Chair. They've been super supportive of this and just in Olympia, and so any input that you have for them, I'm sure, in Olympia, and so any input that you have for them, I'm sure they're excited to receive and keep in mind as they head down to Olympia. So, with that, just want to say happy Thanksgiving to the Commission and all the staff here at Mason County. You're great partners, and just look forward to a good holiday season with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hey, Commissioner, that's 15 minutes.
That's 15 minutes. All right, we do have a tight schedule today because we've got a lot on our agenda and three hearings, so let's move on to item number six, adoption of today's agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Oh, second?
And a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the October 27th, November 3rd, 2025 minutes, as well as the October 28th, 2025 regular minutes, and the November 4th, 2025 special meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the minutes. The October 27th, November 3rd, November 10th, and November 17th, 2025 briefing minutes. The October 28th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, and the November 4th, 2025 special minutes, special meeting minutes. Any discussion? All right, call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through each action agenda. Things, items can be removed for separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Netherlands, if you'll read 8.1 through 8.5. Commissioner Tarzwell, 8.6 through 8.13, and I will read 8.14 through 8.20.
Happily, Madam Chair. Item number 8.1 reads, approval of warrants and treasurers, electronic remittance, claims, clearing fund warrants number 811-6610 through 811-7274. The amount, $3,016,735.43. Direct deposit fund warrants number 120-995 through 121-400. The amount, $941,799.07. Salary clearing fund warrants number 700-9264 through 700-9301. The amount, $1,222,42.67. The treasurer's electronic remittance is $1,592,448.09. Item number 8.2, approval of the Mason County Utilities and Waste to issue a water leak credit for customer number 306019 in the amount of $1,600 plus applicable late fees based on verification that the leaks have been repaired. Item number 8.3, approval of resolution amending, resolution 2023-056, changing the name of the Pacific Salish Economic Development District, EDD, to the Evergreen Coast Regional Partnership, EDD, to better reflect the region. Item number 8.4, approval of resolution accepting the donation of a motor vehicle from Bruce Titus Automotive Group and authorize its transfer into the county services. Item number 8.5, approval for the Chair to sign the sub-recipient amendment with the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, Thurston Counties to extend the Public Service Washington State Community Development Block Grant, contracts number 25-64210-010 for a period of one year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 20... must be 2026, in the amount of $105,000 even. Just for the record, in the minutes or in the paper says from July 25 to June 25. So, it's backwards, so it must be 26.
Item 8.6, approval to amend resolution 2024-057 to increase Mason County Parks Field Use Rages by 2.8% beginning January 1st, 2026. Approval to reappoint Caleb Cowles for the new three-year term on Mason County Historic Preservation Commission beginning December 25th, December 2025, and ending November 2028. Approval of the Indigent Defense Grant Award for Public Defense Improvement Funds in the amount of $123,492.61. Item 8.9, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, at 9:15 AM to take public comment on the draft Mason County Local Homeless Housing Plan. Item 8.10, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Bremerton for Sanitary Service. Item 8.11, approval of the Criminal Justice Treatment Account, CJTA Plan and Item 8.11, approval of the Criminal Justice Treatment Account, CJTA Plan, and sign the 2025 through 2027 CJTA Contract. Item 8.12, approval of the resolution establishing the framework for the utilization of opioid settlement funds in Mason County. 8.13, approval of the quote given by Bradley Air Company for replacement of the Jail Kitchen Walk-In Cooler and the Juvenile Detention's Heating System.
Item 8.14, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 16th, 2025 at 9:15 a.m. to take public comment on the draft Mason County Comp Plan Updates. Item 8.15, approval to advertise for the current vacant position of Chief Public Defender. Item 8.16, approval of the resolution adjusting defense attorney contract rates for indigent defense. Item 8.17, approval of the resolution deleting Fund 114 Victim Witness Activity and, and establish Department Number 181 Victim Witness Activity within the General Fund for the 2026 Budget. Item 8.18, request to set a public hearing for December 16, 2025 at 9:15 a.m. to consider and approve supplemental budget requests and budget transfers to the 2025 Budget. Item 8.19, approval of adopter road application submitted by the Hood Canal Lions Club for the section of McCready Road Mile Post 1 through 6. I knew I couldn't make it all the way through. Item 8.20, approval of adopter road applications submitted by Clifford Denson for the section of East Aggett Road from State Route 3 to Crestview Drive. Thank you for not putting in mile posts on that one. All right, Commissioners, having read through the action agenda, are there any items you would like to have removed?
8.21.
Well, hold on just one moment, and I'll read item 8.21. Approval of the resolution setting a hearing with the hearing examiner for Wednesday, January 14th, 2026 at 1:00 p.m. via Zoom to consider public comment on road vacation number 426. Okay, now, having read through all of the action agenda, are there any items anyone would like to have removed for separate discussion and vote?
Item 8.10 for further discussion about the changes that occurred yesterday.
Okay.
And comment when time comes on a different.
Anything?
No.
Anyone in the audience have anything, any item and they would like removed? Quit giggling at me. For separate discussion and vote.
Well, I signed up for remarks. Is, is this the time to talk or do we wait till you sign up for remarks?
Are you remarking?
Well, I, I want to, I have some stuff I'd like to say, yeah.
Is it an item that we have on the action agenda?
No.
Okay, let us go through this action agenda and then...
I just don't want to be left out, I thought.
Okay, no problem. All right. Anyone in the Zoom room like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? All right, hearing none?
Madam Chair, I wouldn't mind if we, if we went, went short on the, we went 15 minutes on the public test, but if you want to open it before we do any of this discussion and stuff.
You okay with that?
Wouldn't bother me.
Couldn't, couldn't quite hear you.
Go ahead and have another comment.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Sir, we're gonna go ahead and have you come on up.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
I will. Yeah, my name is Richard Anderson. I'm the developer of Lakeland Village and also for over 55 years and also at Allenite for 70 years. And I'm here today for two reasons. First of all, to discuss and, and thank the staff. They're working right now on the Division 15 for Lakeland Village, the 82 unit project, and I'd like to thank Kil Rowan and Loretta Swanson and Luke Fiscassi. They've been doing a wonderful job. We've got the plat completely finished, and we're moving now to final plat approval. We're getting the faces of the plat signed this week, hopefully, with all the people working hard to do it. And I just wanted to talk about my feelings about Lakeland Village and Allen and Mason County. I sit around, I hear a lot of things about Belfair. Belfair, Belfair, Belfair. There's also Allen. And you know, Lakeland Village has over 950 residents up there. We have more people living in the Allen UGA by far than the Belfair UGA. We have the Allen Community Association, a very vibrant association with only 240 members. We have the Lakeland Village Homestead Association with over 950 members. And we don't feel like we get enough representation from the Commissioners, to be quite honest with you. When I asked you today, sir, I know that you didn't, whatever, but do you like Lakeland? I know I'm passionate. I love Lakeland. I love Allen. Okay, I want the Commissioners to live in Allen. I want you to feel like Allen like I do. There's people there that need Commissioners' help. Okay, Lakeland Village, I feel like is just forgotten about. There's things up there that the county could help us with. We need improvements on our roadside. I've talked to you before, last time you were running for election, we talked about increasing the, the roadways. What's happened when they put in the sewers, they destroyed the, the shoulders of all of our roads. Our people like to walk. We're walking around like a bunch of billy goats because we don't have any sides on our road. When you ask me to build a road for you and you accept the road, I have all these specifications I have to have, all this stuff. But when you come in and you destroy what I build and you don't return it back the way it was, we have nothing. Okay? So I just want to tell you that I think that we're at a turning point here where you and us could become a team together and, and improve the people of Allen's lives. And I just, I know we're just talking about feelings here, but sometimes feelings matter, and I know the, how people feel. And for example, I, I read in the paper about some mess you got going with the sewers in Belfair. We don't have any mess in Allen. We have, we have the ability. We, we're zoned in our UGA for another 500 homes. With the help of the county, we can build that. We talk about, maybe they're not as affordable, but I'll tell you, you put more homes in the market, you have more people living in, in Mason County, there's gonna be more homes for everybody. And I just want to hope that the Commissioners will help me and the people of Allen be happy and quit focusing everything on Belfair. Because there's a larger community in Allen of people that care. And if you look at the pride of ownership and what we're doing in Allen, I mean, there's, there's organization, there's caring people that care about things. And it's not just a bunch of shopping and craziness going on. I don't know. I mean, I know you guys love Belfair, but I'm asking you passionately, please put a little bit of effort into Allen and care about the way we feel a little bit because we're only three miles down the street. And you talk about the history, you talk about history. Allen was formed back in 1800s, 1890. I have a map showing the, just things that went on in the town of Allen before Belfair was anything. And the other thing, you know, I, I put Belfair down, but I'm a Roselle also. My grandma Roselle, great-grandma Roselle started Allen. And, and so even Roselles live in, in Allen, okay? So there's plenty of Belfair in Allen also. So just remember that for me, please.
That's your three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go back to our action agenda. You have a motion or...
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda with the removal of 8.10 as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda with the exclusion of item 8.10 for separate discussion. Any comments or discussion?
Comment on item number 8.4. We are taking into our accounts a vehicle from Bruce Titus Automotive Group. I wish we had a picture of it. They did something for the Dare Program, and it is absolutely spectacular. And we need to just take a moment and say thank you to them because they went way above and beyond with a really awesome Mustang and, and fully wrapped and everything. They got a wrap from somebody else, but what an incredible gift to the community and just wanted to say thank you.
It is a cool car. For kids, that's an important thing, so.
I have a picture.
Isn't it cool?
Wish you could share it though.
I know, I know. We'll have to have them post it on the website or something. Yeah. All right. Without further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's move on to item 8.10, approval of Memorandum of Understanding with City of Bremerton for Sanitary Sewer, Sewer Service. Wow. And it begins. All right. Loretta, would you like to come up and?
Sure.
And do some spleening?
All righty. Morning. Loretta Swanson, Mason County Public Works, Utilities and Waste Management. Commissioners, we've briefed and discussed a Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Bremerton for some time, and this memorandum lays out steps to move forward and evaluate the potential for providing sewer service to a small portion of the Puget Sound Industrial Center area. And what you have before you is a draft Memorandum of Understanding. Yesterday, we talked about some revisions, so if it's okay with Commissioners, I'll just quickly highlight what those revisions are. Under "I," there is a paragraph that says, "Both parties agree to conduct a preliminary engineering and financial evaluation that quantifies capital, financial, and operational impacts for both parties." So this is our, our financial analysis. The addition was suggested to include "to be paid for by the Commerce Grant." We've had conversation, the City of Bremerton has contacted us. They continue to have concern about using the Commerce Grant for this purpose, so I want to, to share that with you Commissioners. Then, under the agreement itself, there is a new paragraph or item three. It says, "Both parties shall strive to complete item "I" above, which is the one I just described, within 180 days of executing this MOU." So this is putting some timeframes on it, and Commissioners appear to be agreeable to that length of time. And then a new item four, "Within 90 days of completion of 'I' above, Mason County determines whether it is in the best interest to provide sewer service to the city and will provide written communication to the city." So after all of the study work is done, Commissioners have up to 90 days to deliberate and say, yes, we think this is a good idea, or no, we don't, and then provide a written comment back to the city. And those are the revisions that we discussed, Commissioners.
All right, any questions for staff? Nope. All right. Thank you, Loretta.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioners, discussion, comments?
Public?
Oh, yes. Do we have any public that would like to comment first? Yes. State your name again then.
Yeah, Rick Anderson, Lakeland Village, Allen, Washington. You were gonna take, I, when I put in sewer, I have to buy my own sewer. I had to pay $460,000 for a pump station that everybody in Lakeland uses, but I only did, whatever. Are you gonna service out of our county with our? And who are you gonna service? Is it gonna be the rush development up the street? Is that what it is? Is it land development that you're gonna develop? And so are, are you giving away sewer to all land developers? I'm in. If that's the case, I have 500 units I need serviced. So if you're gonna start servicing people out of our county, then you better start servicing all of my property. That's only fair. So I, and who, what's grant, what magic grant are they getting? I don't get no grant. There's a Commerce Grant. Give me a Commerce Grant and I'll put in all the free sewers, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Randy Lewis. Just wanted to follow up on comments I had made a few weeks ago on this. I'm glad to hear that there's especially a financial study, and I'm not sure what's in the Memorandum of Understanding, but as a citizen of Mason County, I would oppose anything in there that commits us to anything other than the study of the financial impact on the taxpayers. I, I think if we move forward and unless the study conventionally demonstrates that this makes financial sense for the citizens of Mason County, a lot of us would be very disappointed if it moves forward without that kind of assurance. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Do we have anyone else? Yes.
Michael Subtrot from the fabulous little community of Belfair. Charleson Lake in particular, which is actually closer to Allen than Belfair. So I want to make sure that the Mason County Sewer Facility in Belfair can serve the community of Belfair as it expands with high quality and integrity. So the original plan, as I understand, was to have all the North Shore and South Shore residences connected to the sewer system, but for a lack of money, they're still on, largely on septic, which when leaked goes into Hood Canal. And Hood Canal has lots of problems with flow and too much material that causes algae blooms. And we're, that's a big problem for the health of the salmon. I'm a board member of the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. We've been trying to help the salmon in that area for decades. Algae blooms are not good for that. So I want to make sure that if we're going to devote a lot of money and resources, that it go to help the preciousness of the Hood Canal. And I think we make, we want to be sure that we are putting our dollars where they will have a beneficial impact on our environment. Thank you. And I'm not authorized to speak for the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group, so I speak as a private citizen.
All right. Do we have anyone else? Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? And I see that. Ned?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
It was a struggle for me to connect, so I'm glad I was able to here at the last minute. I'm Ned Lieber. I'm the city engineer for the City of Bremerton, and you know, I've been working with Loretta on this agreement back and forth for a couple of weeks, and I just wanted to explain why the grant isn't really appropriate for us to pay for the evaluation. We need an ILA before we execute the grant, and before we can do an ILA, we need an evaluation and we need a commitment from Mason County that you want to serve Bremerton. And so that's, that's a couple of steps down the line before we even execute the grant, you know, to have it available. And it's not intended for an evaluation of the systems. It's intended for the design work that will actually design the improvements that will allow both of us to, you know, have the appropriate capacity. So I just wanted to share that, and then I'm happy to answer a question if you've got one for me.
All right, thank you, Ned.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any more questions?
Could, could I comment? This is Ken Van Busker.
Hey, Ken. Go for it.
Good morning. Commissioners, I just, I've, no, I've told you before, but I just wanted to remind you that one of the original alternatives in the original Belfair Sewer EIS was to connect to the Skia area, and for lack of a Memorandum of Agreement, they decided not to pursue that alternative. So I think it's about time to get off the, get off the dime and do something. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ken. Do we have anyone else? All right, Commissioners? Anyone want to go first?
Ready for motion?
Ready for motion.
Okay. I move that we approve item 8.10, Approval Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Bremerton for Sanitary Sewer Service.
Second? Oh, I'll second.
I, I, I thought you were, you were seconding. I'll second it.
Okay.
And I'll explain, I'll explain why.
All right, discussion.
Okay. So everybody knows, it's no secret, I'm not a fan of this project. I think it's dangerous. I think it's a, a bad situation for my communities, for my county. I, I, I'm not in favor of it, but sometimes in life, we do things when we work with others, and others will work with you, and you have to, to come do an understanding in government in order to move things forward. So I'm gonna name off some of the reasons why I'm not supportive of the project, but I am gonna be voting to enter into a Memorandum of Understanding to look at working with them. Under the, the agreement though, that they pay for the, the feasibility study so we can find out whether it is feasible. And again, let me explain to you, to you why. First of all, I'm gonna tell you... First of all, I'm gonna tell you, I need to thank Commissioner Trask because this originally was gonna be a huge battle because they were gonna put it on that next agenda. Commissioner Trask decided to give me a little deference and brought it back in several weeks. And then with that, she allowed me to get some of the things in this that I think would protect the county. By putting it in to protect the county, I, I'm obligated to say thank you and to work along with that. So thank you for that. Because this does protect the county and does not leave us just hanging as I think it did. The original agreement or memorandum of understanding would have had us paying for the feasibility. And I had a hard time stomaching that. But the way it's worked right now, as you heard, it would come from the grant or from them and not us to determine their future. But some of the reasons why I'm not a fan of the project itself, although I will be voting for this memorandum of understanding. Our licensed capacity in Belfair for the Belfair sewer system is only 125,000 gallons. That's what we're actually licensed to do. That's all we're licensed to do. In order to do anything different than that, we have to expand our spray field. But more than that, we have to get an agreement with the ecology and all to allow us to expand on our licensing. We don't have that. We haven't done any of that yet. I always think that you should have that stuff taken care of before you start looking at any of the different options. So with that, currently, we're using about 82,000 gallons. And at 106,000 gallons, we trigger a forced, relook at our system, how we're gonna do things, and perhaps even to start to reserve capacities and stuff. So we're close to a trigger amount when you start looking at the new systems that are ready to go on. Currently, we have a housing development that is already expecting to have, what I believe is 98 different units. There's a few others that are expected to hook onto it right now that are already going through pre-application. So with that, we're gonna be at our, at our maximum within the next year or two for, for the 105,000 gallons for the trigger, I should say. Now with that, I wanna clarify a few things. In the paper, you heard some misinformation that it was a million gallon facility. It is not a million gallon facility. As you will see in the memorandum of understanding, it is currently only able, if we expand, if we expand, only able to handle 375,000 gallons. So there's a misunderstanding or a miss, something that needs to be clarified, that that doesn't exist. To sell something that you don't have is not very bright. So with that being said, the absolute maximum right now, according to our paperwork and from our own staff, is 375,000 gallons. Now with that, our Belfair comprehensive plan shows that we can expect a population with a 20-year plan at 3,349 people with new dwelling units of 1,340. That's according to Kelron, our staff, and what's going into our comprehensive plan. So with that, if you add that up, the new residential demand would be an additional 207,000 gallons per day. Now, commercial already is expected at a minimum of 60,000, because understand this. One unit doesn't mean one ERU. It does for residents. But one business could be 30 ERUs. So we're not even taking any of that into account. So with that being said, that puts us, if you take the 267,000 gallons and then add the 82, you're up to 349,000 gallons. That's our trigger point. That's for Belfair alone and what Belfair is supposed to keep for themselves. It's not like we have a bunch. Is it possible to do some type of huge expansion? Well, anything's possible. You can build a whole brand-new plant right next to it. But is that wise? It wasn't wise when we did it the first time. Wouldn't be wise to do it the second time. So with that said, we would need to, right now with our 125,000 gallon max, we'd need more than double that capacity in order to handle our own demand. But on top of that, even if we were to charge 50% more for the areas out into Kitsap County, if we were to charge 50% more, we'd still be having to subsidize Bremerton because it costs us more to do all that with our debt and everything else. Why would we wanna pay $10, $20 per ERU to do Bremerton? The question again, can we make money off it? No. Two reasons why you can't make money off it. First of all, the more you put on, you're gonna have to pay money to operate it. You gotta pay money to treat it. So there's no free lunch, number one. But number two, it's an enterprise fund. What does that mean to the public? That doesn't mean nothing, I understand. But to us, that means that anything that is in that fund stays in that fund. I cannot take money from the sewer to operate something in Shelton or to operate something in Hootsport or to go to our law enforcement. It stays within the enterprise fund. So with that, let's say we get lucky, we make a nickel here and there on a gallon. There's no profit in it for Mason County. Matter of fact, there's just risk. And that's why I wanted a feasibility, is to, now if the feasibility shows that I'm completely wrong, well then I might just have to change my mind. But I don't think it's gonna show it's completely wrong, because how can it? Some things are absolute. When you're going up on top of the hill in Belfair, as soon as you get to the top of the hill up there, Belfair doesn't have any sewer system there, okay? Our sewer system went this way and handled some private property up to the side. It's gonna come back on Highway 3, but in Kitsap County. So now on that whole top of the hill, we have nothing to offer. So our own competition will be Bremerton. Bremerton's at the top of that hill. One business there, no matter which business you wanna talk about, ends up taking business from Belfair. It does, there's no other way you can do it. I could use the example of a Big Home Depot or whatever and then lose Mitchell McLendon. But let's just say it's a hair salon. A hair salon there affects a hair salon in Belfair. And here's the difference. We lose the sales tax. We lose the property tax. It stays in Bremerton. They get to keep it. Why would we wanna do that? Why would we wanna create our own competition on top of the hill using the facility that our people paid for? I have one business that I was looking at 2013 when they put the little restaurant and the car wash right there. They had to pay $150,000 hookup fee. They took on the burden in that community to build this. Why would we spend all their money to compete against them? So with that, the project I'm not in favor of. But because my commissioners were kind enough to hear me out, kind enough to listen to me and to work with me to put a protection in here, I'm gonna say thank you for that instead, because they didn't have to. They could've just went and voted right over the top of me. But instead, they put us in a position where I think it helps to protect our county with the verbiage that's in there. So I will actually be voting in favor of it, but at least now you'll know why I'm voting in favor of it, even though I still disagree with the project.
Well, I could go into lots of detail here. There are parts of the sewer system that can handle a million gallons a day. Sewer system has a number of components, and that would get into great technical detail. There are various parts that can handle a million gallons a day. But Randy's correct, the spray field right now is the limiting factor of 125,000 gallons. That's what it's permitted for. All of that aside, that really has nothing to do with my reason why I think this is a good thing. I agree with what Randy's saying. We're going to see growth. Absolutely, it's going to be there. Now, we can handle, we can pay for all of that through Mason County taxpayers and ratepayers alone. Or we can work with a partner who's willing to pay an additional amount. Their number, they suggested, was they charge 50% more for out-of-service areas. I don't know what the number would be. That's something we would have to get to, to reach an agreement. But personally, I would rather share the cost with somebody who's going to pay more because the system needs to be expanded. I absolutely agree with that. It needs repair and it needs expansion. So would the taxpayers of Mason County wanna pick up that bill alone? Or would they like to share it with somebody else? That's the, that's the question that I'm faced with. And I put it, I mean, that's a pretty simple equation for me. I think we've got, we've got somebody who's a partner. The next portion of this is, I've attended a lot of meetings with the Navy and what's happening at the naval shipyard in Bremerton. They're planning on spending $10 to $15 billion in expanding that and to make it capable of handling the current version of the aircraft carriers that the Navy is producing, which they currently cannot. And when they do that, they'll be the only naval base or the only shipyard on the Pacific that can handle those things. Now, if we're going to have a Navy that has aircraft carriers in the Pacific, which I think we would all agree is something that's vitally important, that expansion's going to happen. So with that expansion coming, is going to be a lot of growth. There's a lot of money being dumped in. PISC, which is the Puget Sound Industrial Complex, or as Ken talked about, it's South Kitsap Industrial Center, I think is the other term. That's what we are talking about servicing, is Puget Sound Industrial Complex. This is, its primary function at the moment is going to be servicing the naval shipyard. Well, $10 billion is a lot of infrastructure, a lot of money being dumped into this area. It's going to mean homes, it's going, potentially 60,000 people will be brought in for that shipyard. A lot of those people are gonna end up in Mason County. We will need to expand the sewer system. Do we wanna pay for it all by ourselves? Or do we wanna have a partner who's gonna share the expense? That's the reason I support it.
Thank you. So you guys are gonna hate me, but I would like to offer one small edit. And that is to add on to...
We already have a motion.
I know.
And a second.
I, I realize that. But let me tell you what the, what my, what four little words are. And then we can either move on with the motion or, or change it or pull it back. On I, at the end of the work to be paid for with the Commerce Grant or current utility spends, the reason I'm suggesting this is that I know that this study, our sewer study, is almost finished. And we can also work within our utility department, and they can do that small piece that's almost done. Yay? Nay?
We have a, we have a motion on the floor. We can fail it and put it down. But it's already been moved and seconded. But if we're gonna do that, then we've got a lot longer discussion to have. And I will not be voting in favor of that, that's for sure.
All right, well, I will call for the vote then.
I still would like to comment again on some of the other.
No, because we're, we are very close to our met... I understand this. I understand, but let me finish. Please, let me finish. Please. We have a 10 o'clock meeting with the Scotson Tribe, and we still have three hearings. Can you please keep your comments short?
So I appreciate what the commissioner had mentioned over on the side, but the one, a couple of things to point out when it comes to the expansion of the Navy. If they expand the Navy, that has no effect on this. We already have the sewer system. Okay, we are the winners of that situation. When it comes to competition, we have the sewer system, they don't, we win. That 10 million is not gonna stop because we don't extend the sewer system into Kitsap County. That has nothing to do with it for 10 billion. It has nothing to do with, they have five different Navy yards. They're gonna put their stuff all over the place. There's nothing that says there. But even still, we still end up being the beneficiary of non-competition or little competition, number one. Number two, it's something that's very, very, very important. Although it feels good to talk about what somebody might do, we have never got one proposal asked for them offering to pay anything. Nothing. Nothing. Not one dime, not one dollar, not to be a partner on paying. There's no offer to it. And the comment that we've talked about, about the 50%, was what they charge their people. They never even offered to pay 50% more. The original thing that they sent to us was the opposite of that. Their original ILA said that they wanted to pay the same amount as what we pay, but not even per ERU. They wanted to have a, do it by the gallon. So we would lose even more that way. So with that being said, that, there's a big difference between it for support.
Well, do you want another word? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Oh, I was a nay. All right, let's get that MOU to Bremerton. All right, let's, do we have, let's move on to item number nine. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to address the commission? Yes, can you please keep it short?
Steve Dunkle, Mason County Auditor. Hi, Madam Chair. Morning, commissioners. I just wanted to let everybody know, let you know that we're on track to certify the November 4th, 2025 general election today at 2:00 PM. And in that election, we had a total of 13,800 ballots returned from 47,829 registered voters. That translates to a 38.26% return. So everyone is welcome to attend certification today. Hope to see you there. Happy Thanksgiving. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Do we have any other department heads or elected officials? Anyone in the Zoom room? All right, thank you. Let's move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a public hearing to consider establishing a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Yates Road and Ellis Road. And I'll ask Loretta to come up and brief. Thank you.
Good morning. I will make it very quick. And if you need more details, let me know. Mason County, this summer converted two roads from primitive roads to paved or chip-sealed roads.
Jen, can you shut that door?
And as a result, we now need to change the signage and establish a 25 mile hour per hour speed limit on both of those roads. And so you have before you two ordinances to do that. And we are requesting that you execute those ordinances.
All right, any questions for staff? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, this, I'm going to open this up for public comment or testimony. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to testify or comment? No, hearing and seeing them. Let's move on to commissioner discussion or... I did. I thought I did. All right, let's move on to commissioner discussion or a possible motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Yates Road, County Road number 36600, and establish 25 mile per hour speed limit on Ellis Road, County Road number 15960, as presented by staff.
All right, we have a motion and a second to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Yates Road, County Road number 36600, and Ellis Road, County Road number 15960. Did I get a message from Ken? Are we good?
We are good.
Okay. All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Loretta. Moving on to item number 10.2, this is our public hearing to take comment on the certification to the county assessor the amounts of taxes for county purposes and the amount of taxes levied for each taxing district for 2026, and ask Jen to come forward to brief.
Good morning, commissioners. Jennifer Byerly, Mason County Support Services. And as you stated, this public hearing is to certify to the county assessor for the amount of taxes levied for county purposes and the amount of taxes levied for current expense and road for 2026. An increase to the current expense and road property tax levies for 2026 is not included in the proposed or requested actions. Pursuant to RCW 84.52.070, it is the duty of the county commissioners honor before the 15th day of December in each year to certify to the county assessor the amount of taxes levied upon the property in the county for county purposes and honor before the first Monday in December the respective amounts of taxes levied for the board for each taxing district for district purposes. For property taxes due in 2026, the rate of inflation is 2.44% and therefore, the limit factor for taxing districts with populations of 10,000 or greater is 101% without an additional resolution of substantial need. So if it was below 1%, we would have to have another resolution, and we don't need that. So the requested actions, there are four of them. And before I get to that, I just wanna state that this information for these resolutions that I'm asking you to approve came directly... And before I get to that, I just want to state that this information for these resolutions that I'm asking you to approve came directly from the assessor's office. And once they, once I created the resolutions, the information went back to the assessor's office for approval and also to Tim Whitehead. So just for your information. So the requested actions, number one is move to increase the twenty twenty-six current expense property tax levy by zero percent bank excess capacity and set the levy at eleven million two hundred thirty thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Requested action number two is move to increase the twenty twenty-six road property tax levy by zero percent bank excess capacity and set the levy at eleven million nine hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred forty dollars and fifty-one cents. This includes a diversion of the road levy of two million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The third requested action is move to certify refund levies in the following levies and amounts for collection in twenty twenty-six to recover net refunds slash cancellations and permission for the Chair to sign the form from the Treasurer authorizing the collection of the refund levies. The county's general fund, four hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. And road district number one, three thousand, three thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. And requested action number four is move to adopt the twenty twenty-six current expense and road property tax levy resolutions and continue the hearing to the December ninth, twenty twenty-five commission meeting at nine fifteen A M. to adopt the resolution certifying to the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in twenty twenty-six. And some explanation. On that is that the taxing districts have until December first of this year to turn in their requested levies. So we don't have all of the information or the assessor's office might not have all of the information that they need at this time, November twenty-fifth. So that's why we're requesting to move this this public hearing to December ninth or continue this public hearing to December ninth. But at this time, I'm requesting those four actions to be approved, so any questions?
All right, do we have anyone in the audience with any questions for staff? Anyone in the Zoom room have questions for staff? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right Commissioners, any, oh, let's open it up for public testimony, anybody want to comment or testify? Seeing no one in the room, anyone in the Zoom room have want to comment or testify? All right, seeing none, Commissioners? Any discussion or possible action?
Do we need to do a motion for each?
For each one, yes.
All right. I move to increase the twenty twenty-six current expense property tax levy by zero percent bank excess capacity and set the levy at eleven million two hundred thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, to increase the twenty twenty-six current expense property tax levy by zero percent bank excess capacity and set the levy at eleven million two hundred thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move to increase the twenty twenty-six road property tax levy by zero percent bank excess capacity and set the levy at eleven million nine hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred thirty eleven million nine hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred forty dollars fifty-one cents. This includes a diversion of the road levy of two million one hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to increase the twenty twenty-six road property tax levy by zero percent bank excess capacity and set the levy at eleven million two hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred forty dollars and fifty-one cents. This includes a diversion of the road levy of two million one hundred sixty thousand dollars. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move to certify refund levies in the following levies and amounts for collection in twenty twenty-six to recover net refunds, cancellations and permissions for the Chair to sign the form from the Treasurer authorizing the collection of the refund levies. County's general fund, four hundred and thirty-three thousand and twenty-six, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Current expense, road diversion, zero dollars. Road district number one, three thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Mental health, zero dollars. Veterans Assistant Fund, zero dollars.
I will second.
Motion and a second to certify refund levies in the following levies and amounts for collection in twenty twenty-six to recover net refunds, cancellations and permission for the Chair to sign the form from the Treasurer authorizing the collection of the refund levies. County's general fund, four hundred and thirty-three dollars twenty-six cents. Current expense, road diversion, zero. Road district number one, three thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars twenty-three cents. Mental health, zero. Veterans Assistance Fund, zero. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the twenty twenty-six current expense and road property tax levy resolutions and continue the hearing to December ninth, twenty twenty-five, commission meeting at nine fifteen A M. to adopt the resolution certifying the county assessor the property tax levies for the collections in twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to adopt the twenty twenty-six current expense and road property levy tax resolutions and continue the hearing to the December ninth, twenty twenty-five commission meeting at nine fifteen A M. to adopt the resolution certifying the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in twenty twenty-six, any discussion? All right, I call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. Phew, that was fun. All right, let's move on to item number ten point three. Uh, this is a public hearing to take comment on the proposed role of rates and charges for Lake Management District number one for the Island Lake. And Travis, it looks like that's you.
Right, Travis Adams, Mason County Commissioner. Um, the Mason County or Mason County Lake Management District number one for Island Lake was established on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five by adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five six. The notice and hearing requirements for establishing the role of rates and charges for the Lake Management District pursuant to R C W thirty-six sixty-one one twenty and R C W thirty-six sixty-one one forty have been satisfied. Um, today is a public hearing to hear objections to the role of rates and charges which were published in the public notice for this meeting. The estimated amount that will be raised by the L M D rates in twenty twenty-six is fifty thousand dollars. The total estimated L M D rate revenue for the fifteen-year L M D is three hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, the formula of rates and charges that is to be used to establish the twenty twenty-six assessment for the L M D is sixty-two cents per thousand valuation. It is anticipated that revenue bonds or notes payable from such rates and charges will be issued to finance the activities of the L M D.
All right, any questions for staff? Any questions in the Zoom room for staff? Thanks Travis, you may be seated.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, let's move on to public testimony or comment. Come forward and state your name.
Everybody, I'm Randy Lewis. I am the current Chair of the Island Lake Management District Advisory Committee. First of all, I want to talk about the sixty-two cents, uh, that was an estimate based on the valuation at the time. What the per thousand charge will be will depend on what the value official valuation is at the end of the year. Although the dollar amount's fixed at fifty thousand, the per thousand depends on your house value and all that. Anyway, um, of course, we're in support of the rates as as was over ninety percent of the lake. So as they did in their vote, um, wanted to mention Mark Tucson's here, who's also on our committee. And Mark hosts our meetings at the Tucson Villa. So we 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 appreciate, really appreciate that. And Julie makes killer chocolate chip cookies, anyway, um. I wanted to mention, this would be a good opportunity to maybe update people on our activities. Barry Hallerson, who's the, uh, uh, Thurston County Chair for the Thurston County Lake Management District Association, attended our last meeting, gave us a lot of really great information. Uh, one thing we talked about was, um, there's a process that we want to go through, which is called IVAMP is the acronym, which I don't remember what it is, but basically it's a very comprehensive and thorough evaluation of a lake, which is what we want to do. Uh, and also, there's a chance, uh, you mentioned there are grants available for that, which we're going to. Uh, the deadline's kind of tight this year, we we have like two weeks to submit it, but we're going to, we're going to try if if that fails, we'll try next year. But that that will help fund an IVAMP, uh, which is which is expensive. But as we mentioned when we were promoting the, uh, Lake Management District charges, we believe it'll be worth it. Talking to Barry, some like spend upwards of fifty, one hundred thousand just for that IVAMP. I don't think, we're a smaller lake, I don't think we'll need that much, but, um, uh, the grant grant will be helpful as well next year's assessment. Yeah, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks Randy, do we have anyone else? No one else in the room, anyone in the Zoom room like to comment? Not hearing any. All right, Commissioners.
So I don't have a roll-up of the the action, but I can read it by building it into the other one. Would you like me to do that or do you already have one rolled up?
I do not have one.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve, uh, the rates. To set the rates for the Lake Management District rates at for twenty twenty-six at fifty thousand, the total estimated L M D rate revenue for the fifteen-year L M D is three hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. The formula for rates and charges that is to be established in twenty twenty-six assessment for the L M D is sixty-two cents per thousand valuation. It is anticipated that revenue bonds and or notes payable for such rates and charges will be issued to finance the activities of the L M D.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I'm going to ask you to read that one more time so that, um, so that Chris can make sure that it.
And we can read it into the. Yep. All right, I've moved that we set the rate for the L M D. Estimated amount be raised by L M D rates in two thousand twenty-six is fifty thousand. Total estimated L M D rate revenue for the fifteen-years L M D is three hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. The formula of rates and charges that is to be used to establish the twenty twenty-six assessment for the L M D is sixty-two cents per thousand valuation. It is anticipated that the revenue bonds or notes payable for such rates and charges will be issued to finance the activity of the L M D. And I will make sure he gets this.
Thank you.
Afterwards.
All right, that should suffice. All right, any further discussion? Nope, all right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, boards, calendars and reports. We'll go through those quickly, Commissioner Netherland, Commissioner Tarstwell and then I will. Oh, Commissioner Tarstwell, Commissioner Netherland and then I will follow.
Last week, Commissioner Trask and I attended the WASAC conference in Spokane. It was a lot of good information, but no county business was discussed at the time and any time we happened to run into each other in the halls or wherever. We were supposed to have a sheriff's thing, that'd get canceled finally, okay. Today, I have a Board of Health meeting here shortly.
Nope.
The Squawson meeting, sorry, my calendar still has the Board of Health. Uh, we have a government-to-government meeting with the Squawson and we have one with the Skokomish Tribe at one. Then at two o'clock, I will be in the certification of the election. Tomorrow, I have a Fire District sixteen meeting at four P M. Then we have a Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone. That'll be Friday and Saturday, or Thursday and Friday, so I'll be gone those two days. Next week, we come back for our regular Commissioner briefing. We have a WASAC meeting at noon on Monday. I actually have nothing on Tuesday, that is probably, that's a rare event, I take that back. I have a Fire District seventeen meeting on Tuesday. And then we're started all over again. Alliance for Healthy South Sound on Wednesday at two. It just keeps going, so that's, that covers enough.
All right.
Madam Chair, uh, last couple of weeks, we had the Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meetings, uh, the Sheriff's Breakfast. Grocery Outlet opened officially in Belfair, it was a huge event, uh, people were lined up around the blocks to walk in at eight o'clock in the morning. It was absolutely wonderful, it was raining and they still showed up to do it. I stuck around, uh, spending most of that time wiping down carts and helping anybody that couldn't carry their stuff out because it was that packed just getting through it. And then they had a thing set up where they gave a couple of checks to the, uh, to the high school and they give another check to the food bank. And then the credit union had booths there for collecting food as well, it was a wonderful event. Olympic Clean Air Authority Finance Committee, the hospital had their gala where they're raising money for open M R I, which is and I have to use those things regularly, I can tell you, uh, the difference between going into a coffin and not being able to move or anything like that compared to be able to slip out of sight uh, makes your heart feel a little different when you're getting a scan done. Great job on their behalf, they raised a huge amount of money, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, we lost another person and attended his his wake in Belfair for Ryan. Mason Shands Authority, we had the North Mason Chamber of Commerce and then I attended Lions Meeting here in Shelton by invite. Uh, next up, we have a Chamber of Commerce is having a luncheon, that's a gratitude luncheon to give thanks for all the people that are working with them, helping them. We have a tree lighting ceremony in Belfair, please attend, it's always wonderful. Law enforcement, firefighter board, um, I have a special meeting with the cemetery board, Rotary meeting, uh, Christmas, uh, um, something that I don't know what it is, and then the Hood Canal Corning Council, then our two government-to-government meetings with the tribes this morning, bringing us back and we'll start over and do it again.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, next, of course, you've heard heard it twice already, government-to-government, Squawson, government-to-government with a Skokomish Tribe. Could be attending a birthday party tonight, so can't wait for that one. SWAC meeting on Wednesday, um, again, we have our Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Next week, um, we have our briefing, which also includes our, um, budget meeting as well. Ribbon cutting at Cameo. Ted and I will be celebrating our thirtieth anniversary on Monday, the first, so looking forward to that and then we're going to go to Alderbrook. But during that, I do have meetings, um, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting and then Public Works Board regular meeting on Friday. And then also, we here will be having our tree lighting. So the Mason County, entire county will be lighting trees, so it'll be, it'll be very cool. All right, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, move we adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Alright, we are adjourned.
Public Works and Utilities and Land Management Director.
And Steve Dunkle, County Attorney.
Travis Adams on the County Minister.
And that's Chris.
Yeah.
And there's Deirdre. Hello. Deirdre, you're gonna turn the camera on to yourself, so you can wait. Alright, Kelly, do you wanna just give us kind of a brief overview of where we're at and why we're doing this?
Sure, so the Mason County plans under the Growth Management Act, and as we have since, for about thirty years now. And Marissa Watson, our long-range planner, has been working with SCJ Alliance, our consultant on updating this comprehensive plan. We are required to update the plan every ten years. So this is a 2025-2045 comprehensive plan, has required elements by state law. And then we have a couple, that, a couple extra elements that we do, the economic development chapter and the Parks and Rec Plan, which was not updated this go-around, but those are optional plans that the county has chosen to, to have. And the Health and Human Services is another one that Dave Wyndham updated this year. Marissa and I have been working with Erica Marbet for the past couple of years and, and have met. And we've implemented some changes that Erica has, has recommended and, and we agreed. But then there were some things that we thought, you know, this is, this is above us, and we wanted the council and commission to get together to discuss those and see where we wanted to go with that. And with that, I'd like to leave that to Erica, because she knows better than I do on what those remaining items are that did not go into the plan that Marissa and I had.
Sounds good, yeah. I don't know if you wanna open up first, if you want me to set the ground?
Sure, well first, again, thank you for meeting with us, we really appreciate it. This government-to-government discussions are so important, not only as two sovereigns, but just, you know, I think we're friends and we all have a common goal of doing good for our community, because we're all related here, so that's important. And, you know, as Squaxons, we, when it comes to these things, we have opinions, and we're gonna share them with you. And we may not agree, that's okay too, but, but we still wanna put forth our opinions. And a lot of the things that drive us, if you don't know, is gonna be regarding our natural resources. It's really our connection to our past, that's how we honor our ancestors, is, is making sure that we are taking care of what we have in front of us, really so that we can share it for the next generation, just like all of you guys. Many of you are generational people here in Mason County, and I imagine that you want the beauty of Mason County and the water and these trees and all this stuff. You want your grandchildren to enjoy that as well, not unlike us. And so, it's important that we are stewards of the land today. So that's why we're always looking for ways to, it's hard in today's society, but we're always looking for ways to, to leverage that as much as we can where we can, because we lose those battles all over the place, but where we can, we're gonna do it. And so, what we're looking at specifically here is regarding wells and well permits. And we recognize that, or we know that, and we just, we wanna be brought to the table with this, and that the wells do have an impact on groundwater and the aquifers, and consequently have an impact on our streams. And that's where we come in, because we're all about our salmon and water quality and stream flows and cold, fresh, clean water, all those things are important for the salmon to survive. And, you know, interestingly, I was at a summit just on Saturday, a water quality summit, and I, I got to meet this guy by the name of Kevin Hanson, he's a hydrologist at Thurston County. And we just, we were just having a conversation, and he was telling me exactly that, I was asking him about wells and the impact. And he was saying that there are streams in Thurston County that are no longer streams because of the mismanagement of permitting wells for many years in Thurston County. He took ownership of that, because they, for many years, they thought that the wells didn't impact the streams. But they do, in fact, know that they do, and so that's where it's important. That's why we have these rules, that's why we have the GMA, that's why we have permitting processes. And that's why we keep an eye on these things, so that we don't run the streams out, which negatively impacts the overall ecosystem and the habitat of the salmon and other things as well. And so that's where we're at, we're not trying to be sticklers or anything, we just wanna make sure that if there's one thing we could do, and this is one of them, we wanna make sure that we're being good stewards and we're being responsible with these types of things. And so, I think when it comes to the science, Erica can kind of speak to some of that stuff, but I am thankful. I've seen some things, some progressive things that you guys have done there, you guys added some forecasting tables in there, which was really helpful. Nice to see that you're looking at that. There was a Water Quality District that you guys created, I thought that was awesome, I was like, way to go Mason County, this is fantastic. This is important stuff, you know, that, that you're doing and bringing the community together, and looking at these things are important in your decision-making, that's so fantastic. And so, I recognize the work that's being done, and sometimes not popular work, but I recognize it, so I'll leave it at that.
Can just add some?
Yeah.
And, you know, been around for a while, a few councils on my side and a few Commissioners on your side, but I've enjoyed watching the collaboration and the working relationship with that, and even on the personal level, getting to know you. One thing we do have are really good staff that is willing to work together and look at those pertinent things. I just appreciate your guys' ability to say, okay, this needs to go to the, to the Commissioners and to the council. The other council knows that the chairman is here, and they're, they're taking care of other responsibilities. It's not a fact that they didn't prioritize this, they just had other things that they had to do as well. So, just wanted to point that out, and I think we're really close on the comp plan. When you have these plans though, a lot of times, it's so important that you don't lose certain pieces, you know, and that it's, it's documented, so it will help us and guide us. Because we develop as well as you know, being the largest employer of Mason County, and we take that responsibility really strong with a lot of commitment. Many of our employees are, you know, families that are non-tribal. But when we develop, we really make sure that we're committed to developing in the right way. And we always state that, because we're not against development, we're about doing it in the correct way and following laws, so.
Alright, so, yeah, to add to that, actually, it's been a good, it's been a good few years of working and planning together on water resources, so this is just a, an asking for your review of a few steps and a few phrases or pieces into the comprehensive plan. So, context, there's a few sayings that will help us understand it. One is salmon spawn in groundwater, or you could say salmon rear in groundwater as well. So we all know that we had a long dry summer, the only thing left in the streams is groundwater. And then as, as we have a late arrival of rains, remember it was Halloween before we really saw rain, that means Chalm and Kovar arriving to spawn in low creeks, so every drop counts. The other thing is that wells draw groundwater, and groundwater is what feeds creeks, right? So there's a connection. And our, our science is progressing, and we're gonna catch up our, our planning, we hope to, with that science. Next is that we, we have this memorandum of agreement that we, that we all signed, and then we signed an addendum. And I'm just gonna read the, the purposes, there were two purposes of that MOA. One, to provide a scientific and regulatory framework to mitigate for and offset development as provided under RCW 9094, and other applicable laws. Two was to provide a scientific and planning framework to protect, restore and enhance impaired and stream resources and improve watershed functions, excuse me, that support anadromous fish resources. So, so there's our foundation. And we pretty much completed the MOA, the last piece was to incorporate elements into the comprehensive plan. In the MOA, the county did work that was a simple inventory, it was, it was like a back calculation. If you have parcels that are over ten thousand dollars in value and have a septic system, they likely have a permanent exempt well, because there's no literal inventory of rural wells, only this estimate. And the county did that estimate, and they did it by basin. So, in the Oakland Bay watershed, in the Mill Creek watershed, there are this many existing wells. And then furthermore, in the stream flow restoration planning process, the county estimated the forecasted future wells. Alright, now let's get to the comp plan. The tribe has asked, and we've, you know, we've talked at length about inserting those, the, like what we have now, and then what we think we're gonna be in the future into the comp plan. And the county has inserted the what we need in the future, that's a table, let me make sure I noted that right now. Table three point, or section three point five point nine, and I can't remember the table number Kelly, but it's page sixty-five. The county's done it, and, and that's the, the work from our shit planning, they took it from that document, put it in the comp plan, check that box. Two more things. One is, put the table that says, this is the, this is our estimate of wells by basin. Right now, the county has in the comp plan, just a straight-up, ten thousand one hundred and twenty-three wells. We would like to see it explicitly by basin. The information exists, we'd like it in there, and the reason is that water resource management happens by basin, every basin is different. And I mean every watershed, right? Skookum, Mill, Johns, Goldsboro, all of those. So we'd like the county to explicitly list it out by basin, so that's one thing. Finally, we'd like the county to take, to use an active tense, and, and I'm just gonna read that sentence, I think it'd be better. So there's, there's some passive language in, in that comp plan, and we'd like it to change to active. This is the active language. Mason County will develop and finalize offset projects to offset consumptive use of permanent exempt wells. Right now, the, the language is like, it's something like, there is a list of projects. That's it. And so we'd like to see that, those are the three things.
What is that, what was that?
Uh, let's go, it's on my phone, sorry.
As she's finding that too, we've, we can give you examples of other counties that have used that language and have created.
I actually, no, I, for myself, I actually understand, but at the same time, I'm just, I'd rather always be straight with you guys and stuff. There's a restriction that comes with that specific verbiage, and what happens when you start separating them out that way, you also put a limit on what could be maybe built there in the future, and that's what the tool would be used for. Maybe, I'm Jeff spitballing though guys, maybe it's something along the lines of having something a little stronger that says we will endeavor to offset, and then put, again, I'm nobody or nothing, just wanted to take those things and separate them out and put them into an appendix, so we have something that we're just looking at for our references on how to do it, but not making it legally binding at this point, because my job, as you can imagine, is to protect the wealth and, and the, the ability for them to be able to build on their properties and not lose their value and everything else. So I've just thrown that out there for you guys to think about too, but I definitely understand where you're coming from, and I don't completely disagree. I've learned, you know, you remember, we had some great battles when it came to the, to the wireless. And in my opinion, we had somebody on one side that was there for the poison pill the whole time. But there's an education that comes with that, and I learned some pretty, pretty impressive stuff. One of the things that I learned, and this is my personal belief, I'm not speaking for the county, it does have an effect on the rivers, the wells. The reason why, I live up in North Mason, I can use the Toohy River as an absolute perfect example. Two things affected that, the, the way we logged around it and silk coming into the river, and the idea that we put these houses where they're sucking away from it, so it ends up finding its way to the bottom. And I have areas of the river that don't even exist at times of the year, it's still there, it's just underneath everything. So I am aware, and I do, it doesn't matter to me, just so you know. But I also need to temper that for my own personal protections of the ones that I represent. I just wanted to throw that out there to you guys.
Is that page sixty-five, I'm scared, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I always appreciate Randy being, never, yeah, always, we always know where you're at, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's good to hear. Any comments?
So, I get it, and, and I do also appreciate your candidness. The one thing that I would say for you to consider in regards to that is, yes, you always want to make sure that you're protecting the landowner in yourself, that you're not making hollow promises. And so, when it comes to being able, we, we need placeholders, so people don't get the impression, because there's been a lot of education around this, and there are examples where people bought property with the presumption that they would be able to develop, and we know that you have to permit. There has to be quantity there. So, when we're looking at these items being in there, they're placeholders for the county in the planning to, and they're consistent with law, that will not be something that's far-fetched out there that necessarily is gonna tie you, but it, it's more of a guiding principle of you have to consider this in regards to being able to permit. Because so many landowners have been put in a predicament where they were under the true assumption, and I don't think we have done them well by making sure that the permitting process educates them. So, that's the one thing I would say. And I know what you're saying about fish and the rivers, you know, underneath the, and fish don't live underground. So, that's the importance.
Not that we know of.
Yeah.
Alright, and then just a few other thoughts, but why don't we, do you wanna read that language right there, so we can?
Yeah, currently it says, yep, the watershed plan also outlines eight different project types throughout the watershed that would provide an estimated offset of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five acre-feet per year. This would produce a net ecological benefit. And so the, the, that is in reference to the Department of Ecology's Watershed Restoration and Enhancement Plan that they adopted once we didn't have consensus at the YR level.
And personally, I think, again, I'm just Randy, it was three of us personally, I think we can endeavor to start to work towards those plans. And if it's not said, then it probably won't ever happen, but if we say that, maybe that's a happy medium, we come in between and we put the other part in, in an appendix, but at least we're saying that we want to work on, because I, again, I'm just speaking for me, I do want to work on doing that, I don't wanna just forget it, I do know that there's an issue with some of that. But at the same time, this allows us the time to find that answer. What is the answer, how can we do it, you know, can we in certain areas have an agreement that, that joint wells, maybe a larger type of joint well than we currently have, that we can endeavor to maybe have six hookups or something to keep the property value in a certain area or something like that. I don't know what that answer is, I'm stretching to do it, I'm just saying, if we're not working towards it, it won't happen. But if we can agree to work towards it, then somebody will teach us the answer or we'll teach ourselves.
Understood.
Kelly, remember reading something, there's a very large document, so I can't tell you what page it is. Right, 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 we're going for anything. But I remember something in there, where's the maybe, that spoke about wells and how there was thought about that already in there, and so, or was I reading a WASAC document, I don't know.
I mean, I think there's like seventy references to wells in the document, so, yes.
Yeah.
Which is why it's hard to keep track of.
Page sixty-six does have, you know, the summary of the steps, it's, I mean, it's very general right now, but it does talk about consent, continued support for water availability will be, within the county will be to secure funding and implementation of offset projects within waters. So it's, it's very general, it doesn't, but, you know, next step is getting, finding the funding.
Right.
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 What page is that again?
That's page sixty-six, of, of the version I'm looking at here. So it should be at the very end of, of the YR section.
Okay, so, maybe here? The next step's for continued support of water availability within the county will be secured funding and implementation of offset projects within RIA's planning under RCW 9094, okay. Yeah. So, good start, I think this is the specter we don't want, we don't want. We don't want five, and, and when's the next county, your comprehensive plan update?
36, I think.
Yeah, it's a 20-year plan and then so 20, 35.
There's no, there's no updates in the middle?
We can do annual updates. We can do once per year updates to certain sections.
I'm, that, I was thinking like five or 10. So, basically what I'm saying is like, that, we have, we've got to arrange a time upfront. If we get to the next update and there has not been progress, then, then we really do have a progress, problem because, because it's about preventing drying of creeks like the Tohuya River, right? Or the Union River, I'm sorry. Are you talking about Tohuya or the Union?
Uh, Tohuya, but it's, they're, they're all connected. I, I could tell you, I, I understand what you're saying and I, I appreciate it, but at the same time, holding us into a place where we are stuck to it is, ends up creating a fight between us two. I, we've, I've been around long enough, I've seen it. But one thing I do know, we've done something that most don't. We got together, we worked on some verbiage to work together and we've actually been good partners with you asking us or trying to get us to, to do a certain thing and us allowing ourselves to also be willed into that direction to make things happen. I don't know that that's what it used to be like, because it, I remember when I first came on, it seemed like it was very, everything we did was adversarial. Now, it doesn't seem like that.
It seems better.
Yeah, and it would seem to me that the idea of, of, that we will, you know, endeavor to and stuff like that, we've already proven between each other that we can work together and be steered together for the future in getting there with, without a, without a hammer to the head, just with a carrot with each other. And so, again, just personally, I'm supportive in that matter. I'm always going to have to stand in a way to protect this, feel like it ends up putting us in a situation where we have no choice and then we can legally be challenged to have no choice and then we end up in battles with each other I don't want to ever have. Again, I was there. You guys are great partners, we've been great partners. Yeah, couldn't be better, always.
No, I think, and, and these meetings are very beneficial, so if, if we do see things that need to be changed, there's nothing saying that, you know, it's black and white, yes, put a thought of color. We can always amend or do more addendums or whatever, so it's not, it's not something that's not like ten commandments, it's in stone. So, we can work together on what we need to, if, if there's a situation that comes up that needs to be changed with us communicating like we are now, or you have me for 400 days, just saying.
I can tell you something funny, I actually have a vision of right now, first sitting there, I was like, no, you said we will endeavor to, to get this. I know she will do that and that, it will.
I will.
I, I know you will, and it, and it has, it has a positive outcome when we do that together. So, I can see it, I, that's the reason why I said it, I, I know you, but you're not going to be hiding out, you'll sit there. Uh, but you also, when we first met, you were a lot stronger, uh, how should I put it? Saying stronger, a lot more movable, just like we were. But you definitely are, I hear nothing but great things of working with you. So.
Great.
That means that, and I know you don't always agree with this, so that means that, that we've learned to work together.
That, that's a good thing, yeah. I think it, I'm not going to, I, I, I still request the active language, but we don't have to, nobody has to make a decision right now.
We're just putting it out there for you guys to know where we're at, so you understand.
Appreciate that.
The active language and even the word endeavor, it means that you will need staff, like, you will need competent staff to help you endeavor. And so, it, it is a commitment and so I'm just pointing that out.
No, I, I see it as one as well, I see it from the other, from page 66. So, I see it as that we will go after grants in order to, to try and put some stuff together in order to make that happen with the support of the tribe at, at the legislature, that's the same thing.
Okay.
As we've done before. And we have, we've done that, the same thing during the wire discussions.
Great.
What else you got, first?
Well, let me review my notes just to make sure I don't forget something that is very relevant. Another thank you, so, again, in this theme, I've talked with Dave Wyndham about co-funding the, the Goldsboro Stream Flow Gate. And now, thank you, the county is committed to co-funding that along with the City of Sheldon and the tribe. And that's a burden off, a financial burden off of us, like, to share. But I'm, I'm excited about that too, because part of getting a handle on water resources is you don't know what the creek is, its flow is, like, whether it's good or bad unless you have a long record. And for Goldsboro, we now have a 20-year record. And that's a start, right? Obviously, weather, weather patterns are decade, decadal. But, thank you, you're helping us collect the record that's going to, and like, do the science that's going to inform our future decisions, so thanks for that. And then just, I think maybe I'll just circle back, that last table, guys. So, this is the table, and it's not in the comp plan right now. The comp plan states on page 65, I think, that the county currently estimates approximately 10,000 wells in Ryan 14, so it's just Ryan 14.
So, did you create your own table, is that what you have?
Uh, your consultants, your consultant created and I have it, yeah.
Can I take a peek at?
You bet. And so, that just lists out the number of wells by basin and, and so.
You want to know where.
What's that?
You want to know where.
So, we, yeah, so we know where. It's just like you list out the number of households or the population by population center. It matches the theme of the comprehensive plan.
What if, that's the part I was, I was talking about earlier, what if that was put into the appendix? So, it's actually there for us to look at and refer to. It doesn't put a hammer to where we're, we're now to, to it in particular, but we know that that's what we're working at and that's what we're working with.
I think that sounds good.
Yeah, and it's, it's about keeping that as a placeholder, so people don't lose it. We know the information that we've found, you know? And it's not lost information, yeah, so.
9,000 of those wells are all on one, you know, watershed, it's a problem.
Yes, yeah, some have more wells than others, right?
Well, out of which we've had some waterships where literally we've had major problems and we've had to look at coming close to non, not building. But we found ways around some of that stuff and found an agreement so we can allow for building to, to go and so instead of battling, we, we made it happen.
That's right, and those offset projects are, are the, the ways of the future, yeah, so.
One thing I didn't add before the battle, if you want to call the, the wire thing, I did not believe that, that the wells were having the effect. I honestly did not believe the science that I was looking at was different, but once we got in those rooms, we started going over all of it. Some things are just so simplistic, you can't deny it. Even if the numbers say differently, you know that it's having an effect just because you've got to bleed your eyes to it, so.
So, this is in the wire 14?
Yes, this is where it is, exactly.
Okay.
But the table is from the Mott McDonald work.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, my, I'm sorry, yes, um.
But you guys have a copy of this?
Yeah, and that is, those are, that's identifying the existing wells, correct?
Correct.
Because this table is the future projected.
That's right.
And so, that is the existing from that Mott McDonald work.
Do we feel that, that those, that's accurate enough to where we could have it comfortably in an appendix?
It's as accurate as we're going to get, it is an estimate, like, like Erica described. But it's the best, it is the best available data that we have.
If you told me, nope, it's wrong, I hate it, that'd be different, but you're saying that it is.
I mean.
It's as good as it gets.
Yeah.
So, we could add this to one of the addendums?
Yeah, I do an appendix.
Could we add it?
We could put it, I could put it in that chapter probably too.
Because this is still a draft.
Because we already talk about the total and then all it's doing is outlining per basin.
And just put it above it that it was an example that was provided by such and such. As long as we say that verbally, we're.
We cite the information, yeah.
That would be a long way down there.
Okay, so you have that? Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
That, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, well, again, you've earned this, this isn't something we're just, we've had some long times and long battles on it. You guys have been great partners and you've given us a great education, but you also helped us to get some of these things, some of these solutions, so.
I haven't seen any long battles.
3.549.
That's, that's what it is, is, is in being frank and in touch with each other, that's what, how it happens, so.
We could have this to, it's, I think.
There was a letter that you sent.
Yep, and, and I just want to make sure that, yeah, the reference is, is to section 3.5.9, I'm just going to find it. No, it's, we, yeah. Yes, it is, okay, so, I don't know, actually, I'm afraid that the sections have changed and the page numbers have changed. So, I can give you this, and then if you could double check with Kel.
And then, and then if you find that it's different, you can just send it to Kel and.
I wouldn't worry about it, she, she can put it in, or we'll let her put it in an appendix. It's, it's either way it's going in, in some forecast.
In conclusion, that will satisfy those mandates of the Growth Management Act that were, that require protection. It will, it's a good step towards satisfying those pieces of the Growth Management Act that ask for groundwater and surface water protection, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it, thank you for the time.
Yeah, yeah, this is great, and I would love to continue meeting.
We, we talk about that, we do, we need to.
And I still want to come out and tour your store.
Yes, come out, yes, we are.
I'd be excited, I'd be real excited about touring the store, fine.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, absolutely, we, we should do that.
Yeah, I love it for sure.
Me too.
Me too.
Yeah, it's amazing, no idea until I got into the job, like, holy smoke, this stuff is fascinating.
Right, yeah, I'd love to see how it works, but getting back to the comp plan, sorry.
No worries.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. If you haven't gone, you should tour the Mike Freshman Dan.
I'm sure, yeah, okay.
They're, they're producing millions of salmon. They're bragging about, they've restored salmon to streams that have been extinct of fish for over 20 years. So, they're really, it's, it's pretty incredible what they're doing.
We're on the verge of delisting summer chum and that's unheard of. We're that close.
Millions of, of little fish, you know, from, from egg to, you know, it's, you know, that, that, it's, it's really impressive. If you get a chance, you should.
I will, I will, I've said, I'd heard that before, I will definitely do that, definitely.
So, on a different note, as we're going through some of this stuff, with the salmon stuff, just something to consider. One of the things when I was on the County Quarry Council in the past and, you know, back on it now, there's a focus that got lost, it wasn't just salmon, but somebody came in and explained to us the dynamics of the eelgrass. And it's one of those things, like we said, it's obvious, at some point, it doesn't matter. Well, to me, it's always been obvious that it's a symptom, yes, but it's also a cause. When you take a, a plant out that's creating oxygen and stuff like that and creating a habitat, or you are losing it, either way, the idea of replenishing, it might be something to think about. And I know the County Quarry Council, I've been talking about it again, has taken that on as a project and said adjust the salmon because it, it is connected, so just keep that in mind.
We are, we are, actually have a partnership with DNR and a nonprofit on studying both eelgrass and kelp. And we have a huge kelp field just south of Squawson Island and we're seeing it get slowly depleted over the years. And, and it's no coincidence, it's corresponding with, you know, the acidification and all this stuff, the death of the, of our waters, right? And so, we're doing a lot of studies on that because, I mean, that kelp and that eelgrass is like the older of course in the water.
Well, remember when we were young enough to walk out there and pick up crab for our dinner, literally pick it up or lift the seaweed to get the little tiny clams. That's a thing of the past in, in parts of our waters.
Yeah, fascinating, thanks for bringing that up, you're right on.
Agreed, yeah, and we've got projects in Oakland Bay similar to that as well, so, yeah, let's keep doing that.
Yep.
Great.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion, because we're officially still, Madam Chair, would we adjourn?
Thank you.
Alright. Again, thank you guys so much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, yes.